The majority of my time they were waiting to hear back from the state.
Yeah.
Right.
They didn't hear back and get state approval. There was, the state had a couple of comments that were minor that the commission didn't have any problem with and they fully endorse the plan as written. And it's, as I stated earlier, it's going to serve the town well going forward.
Thank you, Paul, and thank you for the work you do as ex officio and ex commission.
And I'll just, just to add, if, you know, I appreciate all your effort. I know you put a lot more in than was anticipated because this was drawn out. Appreciate all your efforts on this and your continued support of it.
Thank you for the opportunity to be involved with this and also to come back several times to see what's happened at Cheney Park and the, and the railroad, railroad beach.
Your vision has come, come to a reality.
In that one instance.
That's really, that's a good story. It was a good story to start with tonight. Appreciate that. Let's move and segue. We can always come back to the plan itself. I know we all read it cover to cover. How many pages?
I didn't count them.
Several hundred. So, but the concern is obviously in the big daddy here and what will last in our, in our town charter and ordinance book is this ordinance that needs to be inserted in, but do you have some comment, Mrs. Collins?
I'm sorry.
We're going to recommend that you not send this to a public hearing tonight because some changes need to be made.
Okay.
And they're minor procedural things, but they need to be done nevertheless. We haven't had a whole lot of time to review it. So, Mr. Stedman and I met tonight before the meeting and Mr. Dinsmore and we're going to make some track changes and send them off to Mr. Stedman and Mr. Dinsmore.
Sure. Okay, then, of course, we'll take your advice. Did, most ordinances aren't 21 pages long. Is there a way to bring this down and do more referencing into the, into the plan? Is that some of your thinking?
No.
No?
We have some other thoughts that maybe we can cut down on our publishing costs if that's a concern, which I'm sure it is.
Of course it is.
And so.
This is also an up, I'm sorry, this is also an update of the existing ordinance. So this, these are changes to the ordinance that you already have on the books.
Okay. So there might be changes to an ordinance or we'll, or we'll just delete that ordinance and put the new one in or however you instruct us.
Yes, I think we will, we will make sure the publishing costs are as low as we can make them and Mr. Stedman and Mr. Dinsmore and myself will talk about maybe them preparing a synopsis of the changes in the ordinance and we can publish those in the newspaper and then reference the actual ordinance on the town's website, the changes, and we'll post one with the town clerk.
I might have, I might have a reputation of being miserly, but, but it's not a cost thing, truly. It's, it's making sure we're efficient and.
Yes.
And making sure that those that are reading the ordinance can figure it out. And what needs to be there needs to be there, but what doesn't need to be there can be somewhere else as referenced.
Yes, and, and what's good is that though we have the current ordinance in our ordinance book.
Yeah, yeah.
But we will have to republish the entire ordinance in the ordinance, in our new ordinance book.
Which is, of course, different now.
Yes.
It's all online and I don't know. Mr. O'Connell will brief us on that.
Yes, we'll work on that.
Thank you. So we're going to wait on this then by your, by your suggestion.
That's what we're recommending, yes.
And maybe, I think we have a meeting in two weeks. Do you think that's plenty of time to hear back from you?
I think so, yes.
Great.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Collins. I'm sure the commission's okay with that since, since we're moving in a positive direction and it took you seven years to get to this point, but it's another two weeks, right? Right, right. Anything else to add, Mr. Chair?
Mark, can I have?
Yes, yes.
Just two questions on the ordinance, really small.
Sure.
Just on page seventeen, the new language at the bottom third, it says no discharge requirements set forth. We had quotes around the no discharge, like that was done above. I read it as no discharge requirements, but I think it means the no discharge, like you're not allowed to discharge. Page seventeen, down at the bottom, third line from the bottom, in the bold. Do you see it?
I do. Was that your question to me?
No, I just recommend adding quotes around no discharge because it could read wrong.
Yes.
Yeah, and, and above it, we have no discharge in quotes.
Okay.
That's minor. And my only other question is at page twenty, second line down, it says affecting real property. I don't know what, I don't know, I think I know what that means, but I don't know that you need real in there.
No, you do.
You need real, is that a, is it a legal term?
Yep.
Real property as opposed to personal property. So, real property is land, personal property are the chairs and the tables in this room.
Okay, so it's a technical term.
So there is, yes, there is a definition in the law of real property.
Okay, I thought it was written on there. All right. That's all, thanks. I get it.
It's not cyber property, it's real property.
Okay, as these are two separate issues, the harbor management plan and the ordinances. Do you want to consider them both at the same time or, or do you want to move forward on the harbor management plan as there is, don't seem to be any outstanding issues to where is it?
I would recommend that you do it all at once because the ordinance references the plan.
That's what I was thinking.
Yeah.
But Steve, I know there's, you always have applications in front of you and you have other things and important business at the commission. Would it be a hardship to wait?
It wouldn't be a hardship because we have an existing harbor management plan.
I understand.
That we still reference.
So you'd be able to reference that and still go along with your, the business of your commission?
Yes.
And you'd be okay with that?
Right.
Okay, because I know you've got some important work that you're doing over there. Okay, and, and you know, next, in two weeks we'll receive, this is how the, this is how the whole process works. We're going to receive it back from the attorney. There might be tweaks that we will pursue and then we schedule a public hearing. And so then the public hearing will be the first meeting in October, first Wednesday in October, and at that meeting we'll probably have a public hearing before the board of selectmen meeting should anybody wish to chime in on the ordinance and, not the plan. The plan won't be up for review, correct? It's just the ordinance that we need to go to a public hearing on. We'll hear from the public if there are any, sometimes nobody comes to these things, and then we'll, we'll have the regular meeting which will more than likely adopt the ordinance at that point. And then it gets published fifteen days, ten days?
Ten days.
And then it would be in effect ten days after that meeting because we have to publish it in the paper that it was passed. So somewhere around mid-October, you would be logged.
Pretty good.
Okay, so for your planning purposes, for your commission.
Okay, thank you.
Well, see in a couple of weeks, more than likely you'll come back, but in the meantime, thank you for all the service. Yeah, Don?
So just to be clear, will the board have a motion to accept the plan as presented at the same night that we will schedule the public hearing?
We will adopt it when we adopt the ordinance, which will be the first week of October. We'll have the public hearing and when we accept the ordinance in the, in the true form which it will be in, it will also reference the new harbor management plan and all of it will be together, it'll all be, well, and really the harbor management plan will be in effect immediately. The ordinance is going to be in effect ten days, but let's hope that nothing gets messed up in the middle and if so, that's why we have lawyers. Okay. Again, thank you Harbor Management Commission for all the hard work you do and it truly is hard. I read your minutes and I know what you go through, so. Best to you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Thanks, folks. Carryover funds is next on our, our agenda. I think, I think you're okay, Tracy.
I'm excused?
Yeah. Because we're not going to schedule that public hearing, folks. Yeah, so we're going to go to three B, carryover funds. Thank you, Mrs. Collins. Much appreciated. Anna has, well, has prepared something. Maybe I could just read it and leave you in your seat, but maybe not. Anna, do you want to just come up and explain what we're doing tonight?
Good evening. So, in last year's budget, the seventeen eighteen budget, it was the first time we ever, we established a new line item called retirement liability. And what the purpose of that was is if, I mean, if employees tell us while we're working on the year's proposed budget, we can certainly plan for any accrued, accrued leave time they have on the books to pay them out. But it doesn't typically work that. They all wait until they want to retire, they give us notice. And so, being that at the end of the year, I believe last year, that liability was over eight hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars. And this is like all the employees we have and they have leave time that they're allowed to accumulate and carry over from year to year and that becomes an unfunded liability for us. So, as I said, seventeen eighteen, we established such an account and it was, really worked very well for us because we really started having people retiring and at the end of the year we do have a balance left over and we're asking to carry that over. In this year's budget, we also, we budgeted a hundred, a hundred thousand dollars. So far to date, we've actually had, have four employees that are leaving us and they have some time that we have to pay them for, so that has come in handy. And in addition to that, we also have three employees that left our employment in prior fiscal years that when they left, in order to ease the burden on the budget, they agreed to take the payout over like twenty-five percent when they leave, another fifty percent the following July first, and then another twenty, the final twenty-five percent yet the July first after that. So that kind of helps us like budget-wise and so anyways, that's why I think with such a large outstanding liability, it's over eight hundred thousand dollars, it would be prudent on our part to, you know, try to have some sort of a balance, you know, to work these things out. I don't know if anyone has any questions.
I'll make a motion, move to approve the carryover of the remaining balance of fifty-one thousand five hundred and sixty-four dollars in account zero one dash zero one dash one one four dash one hundred dash one two eight, retirement liability from the two thousand seventeen eighteen budget to the two thousand eighteen nineteen fiscal year and forward to the Board of Finance for their approval.
Second. A motion has been made, it's been seconded. We've had many discussions about this retirement liability and also the, you know, the liability that is, that total liability of eight hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars sitting out there, but not everyone's going to retire all at the same time, thank goodness. But obviously is this, if this, this fund grows, we would budget less for it because it's not a thing we wish to carry a lot of funding in, but we don't want to lose the funding we already appropriated for it. So, appreciate your support tonight on this. Any other comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstained? Okay. Maybe something that can be put to bed. Three C is the discussion of possible action, possible action of the purchasing plan. Purchasing plan, we have a purchasing plan in town and for, for quite a while it was a, it existed as an urban legend, they say. It existed verbally, it existed one department head talking to another and how do we do things around here? And we, a year or two ago with the urging of the Board of Finance, we, we committed it to paper and then when we committed it to paper, we realized, well, there's some places where we probably should look at tightening up. Frankly, a lot of work was put into this, a lot of work and a lot of discussion and a subcommittee was formed and a lot of detailed work was done. It, it very much resembles, in my opinion, what we already had, but it's good to, we had a good exercise of looking at it. Things were tweaked, levels were adjusted, triggers were adjusted, and definitions were properly put out there, especially, you know, when we talk about ethics and, and proper, proper procedures. It's good to, good that we went through this exercise. We're a, and I, and we're going to have Ann Santoro, I think, who did a yeoman's work, come up and maybe do some of the detail, some of the work there. Mr. Salerno chaired the subcommittee, I believe, and we want to talk, have you maybe introduce this? It's, I was going to start saying that we are a small town and we, we run extremely efficiently in that we, we have far fewer personnel in our town hall and in our departments at other towns of our like size and our like budget. So some of this concerns me and, and frankly, because, because we're so short-staffed or we're run so efficiently, we don't, we don't have the people to put RFPs together or purchasing, we don't have a purchasing agent, et cetera, et cetera. But, but we're going to, we're going to give this a shot and we're not going to go in whining about it or kicking and screaming, we're going to go in trying to make this thing work and if it needs to be tweaked, we'll come out and tell you about it in a year or two. But I have all the confidence in the world, that we are, confidence in the world, we are heading in the right direction here if we haven't nailed it. Mr. Salerno, do you want to start us off? And I, two members of the committee are here tonight, Lisa Picarazzi, a member, well, both members of the Board of Finance and of course Ann Santoro. So, who use some of her legal expertise, pulling things off the shelves and getting into it. So I appreciate both, both of your efforts.
So everyone, first of all, just thanks to the committee. So it was Dan Cunningham, Ann Santoro, Bill Weber, and we also had, Peter DeRosa was on it too, and he continued on after the election. So a lot, a lot of work went into this. We started with a document that was written by, I think, Anna to kind of put down some of the procedures that they're following now. So that's what we used to start. We compared it to other municipalities. We were very fortunate to have two attorneys on the subcommittee. So their, their advice and a lot of the recommendations went into this. So the whole point of this is to try to help save the town money, not to cost the town more money. Form a policy that's in writing that can be followed by employees. We, we went through many iterations, we met with town staff, we got input from them. A lot of that was fed back into the document, some things we couldn't put into the document because of legal reasons with the state, which Ann could, Ann could describe a little more. But I'll just go over a brief overview. Hopefully everyone's got a chance to look at it. So basically, it's intended to promote transparency and fairness in the competitive bid process while maintaining cost-effective and flexible systems of procurement. We reference the ethics ordinance in here and we actually have it in the back. This is just if you have a financial interest, if a town employee has a financial interest in a company that may be bidding on something, he would need to recuse himself. Not if you know someone in town. We had some concern about, well, everyone knows everyone in town of different businesses. That's not intent here, it's if you have a financial interest. And that's pretty well laid out in the, in the ethic ordinance. We have a whole bunch of definitions in there. Responsibilities, basically the first selectman, you have the, he has the, he or she has the right to review, approve, disallow, or request revisions to any purchases of any value and you must authorize any purchases over twenty-five hundred. All right, so that's in the responsibilities. We broke down the purchase values. So these are, when, when the purchase goes, when we put in for a purchase requisition, you have to kind of estimate the value that you expect it and if it's between zero and twenty-five hundred, it's going to be best effort. So we write, and it recommends we get multiple quotes for that, but it doesn't get to the competitive bid process. From twenty-five hundred to ten thousand, we require competitive bid quotations, okay? And that's all spelled out in the policy. And then when you're between ten and twenty-five thousand, a short form bid package of competitive bids, all right, so that's between ten and twenty-five. And then if you're over twenty-five thousand, it's a formal bid and that's where you get into the RFP, which you were talking about. And that could be more costly. We had a lot of debate what that number should be and town staff really wanted it to be fifty thousand, but there's a requirement from the state that sets twenty-five thousand as the value that we have to adhere to. And then, no, you can talk a little bit about that, a little bit more if you want. So we have, what, we spell out what the competitive and sealed bids should require. All right, that's on, under section six. Anything over twenty-five thousand dollars has to be advertised in a local newspaper. That's one of the things that could be a sticking point, I think, with the town that could cost us a little bit more money than we're doing right now if we're required to do that. Okay, and then we, we talk about, again, we spell out the twenty-five hundred to ten thousand in section seven. We have exceptions, so in any policy we have, there may be exceptions. We have exceptions for emergencies, all right, which the first selectman can be empowered to suspend these procedures during an emergency situation if it's in the best interest of the town. All right, we have unique products and services. We have these all the time, whether it's like artwork or certain knowledge and especially in science. These are spelled out in eight B. Continuation of services, if we have services that we're using right now that has been provided for a while and there's certain expertise in those services or that company, we have language for that. If you have augmentation of purchase order, if you're in construction and you need some change orders, but the change orders meet the, the scope of work, that would be an exception. Cooperative purchasing, so we, we deal with this here, right, with the Capital Region Purchasing Council, stuff like that. If we have already a cooperative purchasing agreement with, we can use that, surplus purchases. And then on-call bids, and those are pretty much if we have a contract out with, let's say it's for curb cuts, if we get some, some curbs that get crushed by plows, we, we could have on-call bids with a contractor. Essentially, they will give us quotes for hypothetical work, but we don't necessarily use that work unless it's needed. All right, and that's, that's in there. Okay. We talked about change orders and then number ten is a waiver. So this, this is if, in the end, if the board of selectmen decides that we want to waive, waive something for a certain reason, could be a cost reason, could be multiple reasons, board of selectmen may waive it and the first selectman and finance director could also do it and if they provide a written waiver request, signed by the department head. All right, those are the waivers and then the exceptions. We also spell out credit card usage, personal reimbursement for purchases using personal credit cards or cash. And then also we finally spell out the travel policy, which is in there, what's reimbursable. And then Bill Weber had a great idea to do a processing flow, flow diagram. So you'll notice that's in the back. What's that?
That's so Bill.
Yeah. Which as an engineer I really like and I think Dan liked it. So it spells out if anything, you know, it's pretty easy to follow of how this process is intended to go.
Sure.
Anna, would you like to, do you want to add anything? Or Dan?
I know Lisa has a comment too.
Yeah.
So, Lisa Picarazzi, fourteen Oak Hill Drive. I'm also here as the chairman, or vice chairman of the Board of Finance. So first, thanks all of you for your service. So I just wanted to give my comments on a couple of things, well, really one issue on the policy. Before I do that, thank you, Mark, for your work, Dan, Ann, and Bill. Who am I leaving out?
Uh, Peter.
Peter, who's not here. But I think it's a great policy. I think it's moved us head and shoulders ahead of where we were. It makes us be more professional and it sort of protects everybody from any kind of misunderstandings when it's spelled out, so I'm a big advocate of it. So there's just one thing I'm asking you guys to take a look at. So we talked in our meetings about having language in the policy about supporting local bidders, people that are taxpayers and live in our towns. And there was discussion about it and I think the way, if I remember it right, Ann, you can correct me if I'm wrong, I think our, our Board of Finance decided that we would use text in there that said that using local bidders would be encouraged. But I would like you, I'm asking you to consider taking that a little bit further. And I just, I have a, I don't know if you guys, I wasn't sure I was going to be able to be here tonight, so I had put in my comments in written form for you and I'm happy to hand out a few of these if you want. And the only purpose of that would be if you wanted to see the language that I found. I just pulled it off the Weathersfield website. I looked at their purchasing policy. Do you guys, does anybody have a copy of these comments?
No, knowing you were coming, I didn't distribute it.
Yeah, you don't have to. I told you I was coming. But I, it might help if you have it. I can still read it for the record.
Sure.
But I just feel it's important for us to support our local contractors and local businesses, folks that pay taxes in our town. Oh, so sorry. So I pulled this, oh, the part, the only part I'm trying to draw your attention to is the piece that says consideration of local bidder option. So this is right from the Weathersfield purchasing policy. I didn't change anything. Consideration must be afforded to any local bidders having submitted a bid that is not more than ten percent higher than the lowest responsible bid. In accordance with the town's ordinance providing for local preference, a local bidder having a principal business located in Weathersfield may be awarded the bid provided such town-based bidder agrees to accept the bid, sorry, accept the award of the bid at the amount proffered by the lowest, most responsible bidder. Note, local bidder preference shall not apply when the bid in question involves a cooperative purchasing agreement between the town and other municipalities, consortiums or the state of Connecticut. So, I mean, I haven't spoken with the town of Weathersfield directly. I'm sure there's other towns that do this. I know the subcommittee that wrote this policy. I know this issue was discussed at length with you guys. I, I guess I would have felt better if we had talked with some other communities and said, how's this working for you? Is it working, is it not? Because I just feel the right thing to do is when we can is support our local businesses. The flip side of that coin is I don't want to disadvantage the town in any way and put them in a situation where we're not getting the best product for our money. And so I, I guess I just wanted the subcommittee to poke at that, like with a, I don't know if you even did it, would make a phone call and talk to people in other towns and say, you know, has this got you in a jam or is it working for you? Because I'd love to see it in our policy if we can make it work. And I'm just asking you guys to consider that.
Thanks, Lisa. Any questions?
Or comments are welcome too. Do you guys have an opinion on that or?
Well, we'll get to it.
We'll probably talk about it.
All right.
We're still trying to digest this, all, this whole thing.
All right, thanks.
Thank you. Anna, do you have anything to add to Mark's, Mr. Salerno's comments, Mrs. Picarazzi's, your own, which is plenty?
Oh, I'm sure, yeah. Well, with respect to the thresholds that are, have been established under the policy, I did want to speak a little bit about the twenty-five thousand dollar and above and requiring formal bidding for that. So I just wanted to point out the statute that you referenced, section seven, one forty-eight V of the Connecticut general statutes. So this statute applies to municipal ordinances. We're still in the land of a procurement policy, a purchasing policy. However, from my discussion with a couple of purchasing agents elsewhere, who in fact, gentleman I spoke with at length was Mr. Rousseau from City of Bristol, been there a long time and talked about this topic because he's been familiar with it. Glenn Clacco, who also teaches with CCM and University of Connecticut in the past, former comptroller for Bristol, talked about this too. So the feeling was watch out, what your limit is. I ran a, passed a few of these folks, such as Mr. Rousseau, what about fifty thousand dollars, because we hadn't initially even contemplated that. And as it turns out, the feeling was way too high, even though you have a policy as opposed to an ordinance. So in theory you could quote-unquote get away with it, but in, in also my own hunting and looking at various policies, I didn't see any that had a threshold of fifty thousand dollars. So that together, that evidence together with this statute which recommends the twenty-five thousand dollar threshold led me to. threshold, led me to think and recommend that we should stay, stay there, you know? There, of course, if you look at the beginning of the policy, I just want to point this out, because it's very important, and I know Mark had had some concern about this, but the last sentences of section one of the, of the policy, where it says, "The provisions of this policy shall not apply in the event that the procurement process for particular goods or services is preempted by applicable provisions of local, state, or federal law." So basically, there's so many procurements that happen for the town that fall outside the purview, you know, of even what, what we've established. So if you've got grant money going on, if you've got, under DOS within the state, other, you know, other types of arrangements that really set the parameters and set your procedures. So sometimes, you'll be having enormously large contracts that are not requiring a total formal process. So I think we're covered in many ways. This is the long way of me saying, I think we've, we've kind of nicely covered, as a committee, the possibilities that aren't governed elsewhere. And I think that...